All right. Good morning. It is Tuesday, October the 11th, 2022, 7:00 AM. This is the regular school board meeting of the Oaks Public Schools Boards. We're at the Oaks Public Schools Conference Room and we have some others joining us by Zoom. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I'll add to the agenda that we need to improve the agenda. The agenda was in your packet. It looks a little different. We are trying to do some things with consent agenda to keep, stay efficient to the bottom more time for informative reports. So let us know if you like it or not. Keep adapting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda that's before you? Heinbach moves to approve. Is there a second? Nagel seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? The discussion hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. The motion passes. We do have public communication. Okay, we have a thanks to the school board from Becca Roberts. A note of gratitude for a great start to the school year. It's been a refreshing start. I appreciate all the work you do to make Oaks Public Schools great. Thank you also for gifting the staff matching T-shirts. I'd say we look pretty sharp. It was a great way to start the year and I appreciate you thanking us, Becca Roberts. Also, a nice picture of the staff in their matching T-shirts from Upper Elementary. Thank you and signed by Shelby D. Adri Hobo, Katie Johnson, Kathy W., Jordan Lynch, Corey Shaw, and V. K. I do have a shout out. Should I do that now?
Sure, let's do that. Okay, I got one shout out and it's a shout out to Mr. Warren. Mr. Warren got up early Saturday morning to drive the 7th and 8th grade volleyball girls to Wishick and then he offered to line judge for the 8th grade team, six matches. Thank you so much, Mr. Warren.
All right. We have placed three items on the consent agenda. Those are the approval of the September 13th, 2022 minutes, the regular board minutes, as well as the public budget and property tax hearing minutes. Those were both in your packet. We've also placed a review of bills on the consent agenda and you should have received those yesterday via email. If there were any questions, I hope that you would have directed them to administrators prior to this. I would entertain a motion to approve the three items on the consent agenda. Nagel moves. Is there a second? Dave seconds. It's certainly in order if there is a quick question to ask or a quick change to the minutes. If one was noticed, anything is noticed. If not, all those in favor of approving the three items on the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. Those say no. The motion passes. Next, we'll go into reports. We have the superintendent's report and we have just consolidated all of her direct reports into her report, although they still appear in your packet. So we have some highlights for us.
Well, let's see, we're leaving here at about nine o'clock. Our Kamiya team is going to Bismarck because we have a Kamiya visit. They don't know when it's going to be, but next year, I don't even remember. Did they give us a range? We know who our visitors are that are coming, but this is a required training, so.
Okay, so we do this every five years and we have at least two new board members since the last time and maybe a new business manager. Can you explain for them and the public what the Kamiya visit is all about?
Sure. So this is the accreditation visits. This is the body that will accreditize our school and they come in and they will visit all components of our schools. But prior to that, we have to prepare paperwork for them, you know, to show us all the different aspects of what our school is doing. And then they will come and they will visit and they will give us feedback after it and they will decide if we can be credited, if we can be credited with requirements for, you know, things that we have to do or if they're not going to credit us. I'm not concerned about it. Last time I think we were credited and accredited with accommodations. So I just know, I mean, we've got things that are current. We have our PCBL, we're constantly doing things, we're not stagnant. So I think it will be a good visit. We'll see what it's like today. The last time that they came to visit, you know, I know things have changed. They've got new leadership at Kamiya, so it'll be interesting.
And in fact, the last time they were here, they were not even called Kamiya.
No, at Bensett at that time and then they migrated over to Kamiya.
If I remember right, was it the last time we received accreditation? We've got a special, two times ago, we'll get a special notation that we have, Oaks Public Schools has been accredited for, at that time, over 100 consecutive years.
The high school, I believe, right?
I don't know why many years have been now. Okay, so that process is just getting underway.
Yeah, and will be completed sometime this year. Yep, and it will be finished. Brennan and I are going to be going to NDSA next week. We normally go to that, but I'll just be in a different strand with the superintendents. But there's some interesting items that are coming up, like our bus driver training, which Dave and I have been working on. One of the sessions is with the bus driver training. So I'm looking forward to going to that because that information is, you know, stuff that I need moving forward if I hear it from my colleagues, you know, instead of reading a piece of paper, an email will be extremely helpful. You already saw the staffing updates. I was trying to think of anything else. The plumbing, I gave you that update on that, that it's sitting now with the lawyer, Aaron Dean. And Sonny was in on that meeting and Shannon, when we met with them, and I'm assuming it just takes a while for things to get done because I'd like it to be done the day after. But it's not done the day after. I just want to get this done and get it behind us and know as we're moving forward what would find that, so. Other than that, I mean, if you have questions, the principals are here, Dave's here.
Are there any questions for Superintendent Sell? And the other reports were also in the packet. Any questions or anything anybody wants to highlight? Should I out to them? Oh, if you know anybody that wants to try.
Dave and I are taking games with bugging people, bugging them. I think they saw me coming and Bob German had given my heads up and he started.
All right. Is, is there, when we take a motion on all three here?
I don't, I don't even think that we have to make a motion, but maybe it would be nice to just say that you received them. I don't, I don't know what you're, I was going to ask you that, what your thoughts were on.
All right, but I wasn't here in time, so. So we'll take a motion after we complete all three of the reports.
Okay, sounds good.
All right. Now, North Dakota Insights, that's in blue on the packet, so that came separately.
Yeah, it's, I made this packet, so if anybody wants them there at the end of the table. I do have the PowerPoint. I don't know if you want me to pull that up. I'm not so great. I might need Dave or some, or not Dave. Great. Yeah, okay, so if I want to put this up on the board, can I do that, you guys? Okay, so I can do that. And then if I want, they would be able to. Yes. Yeah, I won't share with them, but. Okay. And then when I want to. Okay. And then if I want to view this. I want to view this. See? I feel like you're. Okay. So it, and you've got the packet already with this in there, but I just thought you might want to see it. So they just released these reports. Let's see, Brennan and Gray, when did we have to have that? We had a chance to look at them first. So they're divided into elementary and high school. And the elementary, actually, which most people don't realize, is 3rd through 8th grade. So the kids that test in all of those grades, all of our scores are put together and averaged or, you know, they come up with whatever their algorithm is for. But the high school is just 10th grade, at least for the NDSA. So, so this is the first one you can read underneath there that it's, S is what we use, you know, and we have to meet the school accountability. There, this is the data from last year, 21, 22. Oh, here it tells us our dates. I should have, but on August 15th is when we were able to look at them. We had a chance to reply to them and then they put them out for public access. So you can go out and see our North Dakota Insights website if you want to. You just type in North Dakota Insights. You can search for any school in the state and you can get data from them. You can search for districts, you can search for Oaks Public School, Oaks Public School, or either one, the high school or the elementary, and see the separate data. There's a ton of information out there. You can dig into lots of stuff, just about anything that you would want on there is on there for you to look at. So you can see that, you know, the K through 8 is elementary and the high school is 9 through 12. Again, most people don't realize that. I think even till a couple of years ago when we were trying to figure out our scores, it was like, why are our scores where they are? You know, I was trying to do the math and then you realize that it's K through 8, high school. So in K through 8, we have less pieces of our pie to add up for our accountability score. And there's been a lot of discussions on that to try to find more pieces of the pie. Obviously, because if you see like the different pieces of the pie, the state assessment was a lot bigger piece of pie for the elementary and if your kids didn't do well on that one snapshot piece, your, your school was penalized pretty heavily for that. So the high school has a lot more pieces of their pie. I shouldn't say a lot more. They've got two more pieces, but it's rather helpful to have more pieces. So I know the elementary is talking all the time about like, where do we get more accountability measures? So as we move forward into the B Legendary, which is our next piece, these are some of those things that we'll probably be talking about. How do we decide what we are accountable for? For the state, you can see that. And then on the bottom, it says that grade 7 and 8 are with us with the elementary, or I'm sorry, with grade, and then the high schools.
Okay, so clearly the circle and the percentages in these pies should total up to 100, right? Because if I'm just glancing at this and I see graduation rate 16%, my brain says the graduation rate is 16%. It's only 16% of students graduate, but that's not what this is depicting. So 16% of something, what are we measuring here in this poll?
So this is just what we're held accountable to the state and Brennan and Gray jump in if I'm saying something wrong, but this is what we're held accountable to the state. So 16% of the high school score, or whatever you want to call it out there, is graduation rate. 21% is if their kids are choice ready. And you know, last year, do you remember, we got a zero in choice ready? Because we didn't have a report in or something and they wouldn't change it. So for that 21%, we got a score of zero.
Even though we, we, we were far better than zero in that, but that's how it would have been.
That was how it was reported and they would not, Brennan had many conversations with them and we were not the only school, but they would not go back and change it for whatever their reason was.
And was it only that there was a one box on the report that had not been checked?
And that then wiped everything else out.
So again, here at the interactive dashboard, you can go ahead to it at any time. And there's just tons of stuff to see on there for any school in the state of North Dakota. Here's what it looks like for the dashboard and you can go up here where it says search insights and you can, you know, search for your school and then it breaks it down into all the different areas. There, there's a report card, there's a score card, there's a dashboard, there's academic progress, there's financial things up here. So this is going to show our school performance. So we broke it down. So this is for the elementary. On the NDSA in spring of 2022, the state of North Dakota, 44% of the kids were proficient on the NDSA and in math, 39%. Now, I have that for at the end there. Our school results were, we were 50% were proficient in ELA and 51% were proficient in math. And again, remember that's 3 through 8. And if you want to see those again, you can go down there or you can dig in deeper if you want to. Another thing that's measured for us is academic progress and that's using the NDSA. Our results were 49% of our students' net growth and the state was the best state. ELA, we, so this is our EL kids, our English language proficiency. But if your school has less than a certain number, then numbers are suppressed because then it would be pretty easy to identify who those students were if you really wanted to. So our scores are suppressed. And if you look on North Dakota Insights, in some areas, they give you a range. Brennan and I were having this conversation because our high school, you'll see on there is a range, like 20 to 29% of our kids were proficient, but that's also because it's only one grade. And, you know, there's a certain number of kids and then they will give a range instead of giving a hard, fast number. The elementary has hard numbers because we have enough kids, but Brennan had hard numbers, so he shared those with me. So I'll show you those in the high school. So in what month do we give the the survey? February, we give, we give each of the kids, I'm a survey, I'm a student engagement survey. And we talked about this before, the student engagement surveys. If it's Friday, you really look forward to coming back to school, do you wish you could have school on Saturday or you wish you could stay home? You know, questions like that, but that really, that is a question. So the school results for the elementary were 43 were committed, 40% were compliant and 17% were disengaged. Our school is under general support. And if they look at all the schools in North Dakota and you can be in one of those three areas, comprehensive has certain requirements and targeted has certain requirements that, you know, that in the past used to be through Title I, but now we've just got general support is where most of our schools in North Dakota are and we're in the general support category. So there are no requirements above and beyond the NDSA. Okay, so the high school. So again, remember, this is just 10th grade and Brennan, you can chime in if you want to.
This is this year's 2nd grader or last year's?
Last year's. Yep. So for the state of North Dakota, the ELA was 44%, math was 39. Our school, ELA was 30, math was 19%. This is that engagement survey again. 18% were committed, 57% were compliant and 26% were disengaged. But this would be all of your 9 through 12 kids. So there's more students on here, so. Graduation rate, Oaks was 93%, North Dakota was 84%.
Go back on the academic score and one more back. Okay, is this, this, okay, that is math. Okay, there is math in ELA.
No, that's fine. I was on a meeting the other day with Superintendent Basler and she said that the math scores for 8th grade across the state dropped. Otherwise, across the state, the scores didn't. So they, they also are looking at the state like, okay, so why is this happening? But we didn't see that with our 8th graders, we, that are 10th grade. Um, yeah, graduation completer rate. And Brennan, one might have to explain stuff like this for you. So our GED completer rate is 97 and North Dakota is 90%. If you have questions on that, you would be the guy. Does I even have to ask him about graduations confusing too?
Depends on how you want to report on it, whether it's the cohort model or when the seniors got it. A lot of people want to start a new career, got a GED or a GED for seniors.
That's another one of those things, Amy. Again, our English language kids said that we have not enough kids to report, so they suppressed those numbers first, but. Choice ready. Our choice ready score was 60.71%. That's low, or that's how much our growth was, right? Because, yeah.
Because we went from zero to 60.71% or this.
State scholarship and choice ready. So those are the number of kids that were able to get the state scholarship, Brennan. Or are ready for the state scholarship.
Be aligned now.
Oh, now it is.
Yep. So this year's class will be the one that can use the old system or the new one. But then moving forward after this, there'll be a line of choice ready then. Before this, opposite kind of different things, different requirements.
The ACT or the. And our high school is in general support too. They don't fall into the conference for the target area in the general category. So again, no other requirements besides the stuff that are in the S. F. requirements. All of our schools have to have a strategy map and these are the strategy map. The high school and the elementary are the same, same strategy map that was created. So you can go on there and see our strategy map online, probably easier to read than this, right? And so after the final release of the scores, we, that day, we sent home letters to all of the parents. Marines sent us home and then also it's posted on our website, so somebody can go in and they can also, they're directed to the North Dakota Insights page. So transparency for anybody that wants to. I will try to answer your questions. If it's the high school, like I said, some of that stuff is still not my expertise area, but it is Brennan.
So if you could name one thing in this report that you're most proud of and one thing that you're most concerned about, what would those be?
Well, gee, that's a hot question. Um, I think the engagements, our engagement has improved. I mean, our scores have, the NDSA high school score probably, and for me, maybe Brennan is pretty good at this.
I wish the junior high would be included in my high school because it would be a different playing field, but it's not. Junior high does really well, especially in the science area, but are you aware math scores have to get better?
So with the engagement, you talked a little bit about the questions that are included in the state engagement exam. And I thought that there was an effort to improve that.
I thought this last round, the questions were better because I walked around and I, I watched while they were doing it. There were still some of those wonky questions, so that, you know, you're wondering like, okay, so, and I know they worked really hard on it and it is better than it was, but there's still some questions that, you know, let's be honest, right? If it's a hard day at school, who wants to come back? Even, you know, not, not only the kids, but if you have a choice between a vacation day, coming to school, most kids are going to want to take a vacation day. I think most teachers are going to want to take it. The superintendent's going to want to take an vacation day, right, if it's offered to you the next day. So those kind of questions are, you know, you kind of scratch your head on those, at least I do when I was walking around, looking at those. But I think questions are better, but I like our engagement that we do. I get a lot more out of our Wellington, the Wellington survey. Maybe, great, you could explain the Wellington, because that's.
Yeah, I've showed you guys a little bit of the past and saw that quadrant of, there's forward, there's challenge, there's engaged and.
Entertained.
Drive or entertain, you know, how your kids are able to narrow it down by class and everything like that. That's just a snapshot and the kids are taking it all at once. You know, the Wellington that we use is, is by class, a little more focused, so cleaner results. Things that are more actionable, actually. All we get is a score there. You don't get any other, you know, it doesn't get broken down anymore. It's just disengaged and all of the other two. I can't, compliant and whatever, committed. So, I mean, what is that? Is that even, you can't break the data down any further. You can't look. I don't even think you can break it down by class. It's just from the 3/8 of the 9/12. So maybe your 4th and 5th graders are really disengaged. You have no idea. So it's really just, you know, it's not very good data because you can't break it down. It's hard to make changes on that.
I know every time we get into a meeting of, at least for me, for as a principal and now they talk about the engagement survey. It's just one of those things. You need to have another measure, right? I mean, in the elementary, we're happy to have another measure just because it gives us one more area, you know, versus just leaving that piece of the pie off, but it's really hard. I mean, you guys as a board have that conversation. How do you decide what we're going to use as a mark of success? And so I know the state is working on it because it is a bonus intention for a lot of schools saying, you know, you don't get the data. Even on there, it'll say, you have this much room for improvement, but really, we don't know. How do you get that improvement?
The Wellington that we rely on internally takes a matter of less than 60 seconds for the class to complete. And they, you could do it several times a week, every, every day, every class, if you wanted to. Where this, this state's engagement survey.
For one snapshot.
One time, it's 20 questions.
I think it's like a 60.
60 questions. Oh.
It takes a, it takes a class period.
Well, they're disengaged for the finisher.
Yeah.
You know, and we try to do so many things to keep them engaged, but have you done it in your classroom? Have you, or we try to keep the same teacher doing it.
Yeah, I think in K or 4, 5, 6, we've done it in chapter. I used to do it and then I.
Yeah. And we try to stay with the same person and we try to make him say, okay, everybody stay at the same place with us. And we go through each question and we read the questions to them. I mean, we're trying to jump over some of those hurdles that we think may be problematic because if you get somebody who would just flick through it or, you know, we're trying to fix some of those things that kind of have a little more control, but. I don't know. There's no data in there that's going to help Liz or Ryan. And that is, is there anything for you guys that would help you in your class? Not the Wellington, but the state one. But the Wellington gives them feedback for their classroom.
And the, the state survey, we don't have to pay anything to, to complete. And the Wellington, we have some investment in that.
It's not very much, though.
Actually, we've never paid a cent for it. It's been covered through our partnership with College Works. If we continue beyond that partnership, I think it's like less than $900.
And are we actively implementing, evaluating the engagement? Is each teacher getting their results and evaluating and striving for improvement?
Did some training on it this fall at the beginning of Squire and then we just took it. I put that in my coordinating notes on last Thursday or Thursday before that, I can't remember. And then this coming, whole APD will, after that training, be created like a worksheet for the teachers to fill out what their data was for the first time and then we'll do it six times throughout Squire is the plan. But if Brian implemented something new in his classroom and wanted to get some feedback on that, he could do it whenever he wanted to. Just to give some feedback, the kids liked it, didn't like it, isn't an idea.
Okay. Any more questions on the Insights report that we have here on paper?
As you go, if you want to go back and look at Insights, if you have questions, just ask one, you know, and if I don't know the answer, I'll find it. You know, we can figure that out. So like I said, there's tons of information on that in North Dakota Insights page.
All right. If not, we'll move on to the third report, which is the B Legendary grant update. Now, as you know, we applied for a grant through the state to get to go through the B Legendary School Board Leadership Institute. And I had heard that, I think I heard that the number was eight school districts applied, but nine were awarded. So there must have been a late entry and I don't think, you know, I don't think we did just the most fabulous applications. I don't think that's why we won, but I think we all, we all won, so. I don't think that's why we won, but I think we all, we all won, so. We were advised that we have been given granted this opportunity. And we have until way next summer to complete the training. I would like to do it sooner if possible, but those that I have talked to will say that it's advantageous, not just financially, but also you get more out of it if you're working with other school districts. There are two that are relatively close to us that also receive the grant. Those are Richland and Cullen. And Superintendent Stone has already connected with their superintendents to offer that, um, we could partner with them. And since we're in the middle, we'd be happy to host and thought about then, uh, working it up that grown small pounds. I think, well, we, we will be, I haven't been contacted by the company yet, other than that one initial letter. So what are your thoughts about timing? And it's a two day commitment. And some do it on weekends, um, I guess maybe they mostly do it on weekends. We could maybe do it on a Friday, Saturday. I don't know, but then if we're trying to work with others, we have to work with their schedules as well. Any thoughts, questions? If you posted?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for all the help. All right, uh, with that, is there a motion to accept the three reports, Superintendent's insight and the legendary Brown's. I thought moves to accept, is there a second? Three seconds, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, both saying aye. Passes and that brings up to the staff spotlight, which is our high school math area, Sheila and Mr. Schneider.
Um, okay, so we're going to talk about what we're doing in geometry, Ms. Sheeler and I are co-teaching. Uh, so the original plan was that with the junior high implementing standard based grading that we were going to, um, I was going to try that with freshman algebra one, but with the scheduling and the way things worked out, we have thirty five kids in our third hour geometry class, so we thought it'd be a good idea to co-teach and then implement this. And so we're also doing standard based grade, grading and flexible pacing class. And so we'll kind of speak on both points of those. And so with the flexible pacing, if you want, we can have some of these events this round. Uh, we created a schedule pack for the whole semester, and so this is just like our pace uh, that we want the students to follow. Um, obviously, the point of being flexible is that they can go ahead of pace or, you know, evolve a little behind the pace. And so like this pace would be like the normal pace that we teach in front of everybody all the time. Um, and lecture and then go through like a normal school year that you have in class. Uh, but what this allows is that, uh, they can access their content online. It's, it's the same content, it's, everything's the same material, the same content, it's just delivered in different ways. So like, if we recorded one of our lectures or something, would be one example. Um, they can watch that anytime, it's the same thing that we would have done if we had taught in front of all twenty five or all thirty five. Um, but they can watch it wherever they're at, so like if, um, they're able to, uh, if they understood the previous concept before and they're normally, the students have to just wait until everybody's ready to move on to the next lesson with the teacher. Now they're able to move on whenever they're, so we have like right now, currently, kids are in all different spots right now. And so it's kind of chaotic in one sense, but it's also real organized because they know what they're supposed to do. And because the way we've laid it out for them is kind of put the responsibility on them is they know where they're at and they know where they need to be working on next. So, yep, yeah, progressions are here too, so like this is kind of what they work through. And so in these progressions, like this is one standard at the top that we're working on in geometry class. And then all the things that they need to do, um, are below here. And so they kind of just know how to follow through that. We kind of practice with them and taught them how to go through a progression, so. I think more in flexible pacing.
Pretty much it. So that takes us right into the standards based grading side of it then. Um, so as you can see on this progression, right, they choose one option to learn the topic. Um, as you can see, a mini lesson, that would be us teaching them directly. Um, we have yet, I have yet to have anyone ask me for that, but it's always an option for them. Um, right, and then they also always have the option to just read their textbook, because we know people learn in different ways. Um, then we have an op, them down below, there's a choose one and that's their practice option. For unit two, that was my unit, I've kind of been in charge of it. And I tried to provide a paper option as well as a digital option for each, um, step for them. Um, and then after they complete one of each of those, they will take a lesson check, which is just like, it's a half sheet of paper, I should have brought some, but it's just a half sheet of paper. It just asks a couple, two, three, four questions on exactly what they learned. Is that what we thought?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and then we get that turned around generally by the next class period, so that they know exactly if they did it. If they didn't do it right, then they get it back and they're, they can fix it um, by looking back at their notes and looking back at, and maybe even doing another learn or another practice if they need to. Um, so that's kind of how we do that, we enter grades for their practice and their lesson check. So they get two grades for every level that they do. Um, so by the end, you know, they have six to eight grades and then at the end of the whole unit. So there, a lot of kids are getting towards the end of unit two now. Uh, we had six pathways that they worked through that looked just like this, um, and so then they'll have a big unit test. Kind of like your old chapter test, right? It kind of has all of those things. And we have each of the levels on that assessment, so then they'll get a level for each standard that they've done this unit. Um, it took a little bit of learning at the beginning, uh, because obviously for geometry specifically, a lot of it's brand new. Um, so right away, everyone was starting at a level one, and so grades were a little scary, um, because it does translate in power schools to just your standard grade. Um, so that was a little nerve wracking for some, uh, initially. But if, so every time they start a new standard, their grade dips a little bit because they're at a level one. Um, but as they work through the progression, right, it comes back up to that level three, which is that B, and then a level four would be an A, so.
So what's a hard learning point of that one going in right away is like, that's just where they're at right now. Of course, in power school, being in the high school has to translate to a D. And so when you first put those ones in, you know, they kind of freak out, they're like, oh, I'm at, I have a D, you know, or they're used to being a D and being a bad grade. But the, the one is just where you're at right now, and so as they work through to get to is now their grade is now at a C or whatever translates to a C. But they're starting to learn that it's just the one, then they work to it to, and their goal is to get that three at minimum. And so I think they're starting to understand that, but some still are like, still freak out because they're used to that letter three, D is not a good grade, but that's still a working progress right now.
And overall, I think the co-teaching has really helped, um, some kids prefer his teaching style. Some kids prefer my teaching style, so it's really nice that the two of us are teaching this together. Um, so if the kid's struggling with me, they can go ask Schneider or vice versa. Um, and so that's been really nice to see.
Because you guys are in the same class of the same kind, or you have to switch.
So we're still in our two rooms, just because neither of our rooms is really big enough for thirty five kids to function well. Um, but we have kids moving between our rooms quite often, um, and they can ask either of us questions.
And these are sophomores?
Yes.
And so they had standards based grading when they were in elementary school. And then they've been away from it for three years, right? Okay. This is their first time back with us, right? Other questions?
It's really neat to go in their rooms because some of you have been in there, but you see these kids, like, you think they're wandering around, but they're so engaged. Like they can go to the kids and ask them a question, they can tell me exactly what they're working on out, well, what are they doing? Oh, well, they're doing a lesson with Mr. Schneider, you know, so they, they don't really seem to be disturbed by the others doing, they're just doing their, and they know what they're doing. And the power in that for those kids to be able to control that.
So they're sophomores and will they be taking? They'll be taking the state assessment when?
Oh, good question, yes.
In the spring, so we might see some. We'll, we'll see how, how they score there. And then some of them, will any of them take ACTs as sophomores, not till juniors?
And they're teaching to the standards, so those are the standards that are going to be on the NDSA, so there's not going to be that disconnect. They're teaching those standards and the NDSA is built off of those.
And in your progressions, you're mentioning the textbook, so we do have textbooks, either paper or online textbooks, which do we have both? Do we have?
We have options.
Okay. And do the, does the textbook align well with our state standards?
We need the adjustments that it needs.
Yeah. We use the sections that apply to our standard.
Right, yeah, we're not just marching through the.
And the kids understand that, we're not just starting at the beginning and going to the end, you do everything, no, you do what it says right here, pages one twenty, one twenty-three, that's what you.
That's where you go, right, figure this out.
Yeah. Oh, you have a few that choose the textbook. And you mentioned IXL on here. Tell us a little bit about IXL.
Um, so IXL is an online platform that provides practice, um, there's math, English, I know Spanish users is a lot.
Social studies and four parts.
Perfect. Um, but you didn't know that? Sorry. Basically, it, uh, allows the kids to answer practice questions and it immediately tells them if they're right or wrong as soon as they hit the submit button.
Gives them a really good synopsis, if they get it wrong, it walks them through the steps that they would need to take to get it right. The only thing is we got to find the programmers and redo that if you get a question wrong, it gets back for five.
It's true, yeah. It's a little uneven, the earning and losing. Yeah, but yeah, we don't use it all the time, um, especially with geometry, it's good for some things, it's not great for other things, so we, we pick and choose when we use it.
So I know one of the concerns, yeah, so one of the concerns on our survey that we sent out to parents was a big concern was that their fours are not available, right? They can't get eights, but is that true?
No, um, of the six progressions I had, we, I think there was only two that didn't have a level four. Um, and obviously that would be something moving forward that we would try to build in.
Can I clarify too, that a four would be an eight plus hundred percent, and a three and a half would be an eight.
Three and a half.
So if they don't correlate, the four point O is a four on their progression. So just so we understand that, that's the difference.
Yeah, one nice thing with our like flexible pacing, because kids are at different spots, you see some kids really helping out other kids. Um, and so we've been giving three point fives to those kids because they are going above and beyond, um, and they're trying to help others, so.
I have always thought that's the, the best way to learn is try to teach someone else, because you have to figure out how, a, a new way. That's maybe not the way they learn it best, but then, right, they can figure out another way to teach someone else that really reinforces. Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you for your excellent work and your presentation, looking forward to next month. And what pillar was this?
Well, this multiple pillars, kind of combination pillars, yeah. The model.
All right, thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is old business, and for that we have financial reports listed. But again, Shannon is trying to keep her head above water with payroll and bill, paying the bills and so on. Has made progress in the training and seeking, um, uh, more, more assistance and support in, uh, working on those end of month reports. So any other comments or thoughts about that?
Uh, just been able to help, have, help, um, and for April, she's come in and so it's streamlined some of the things that I did, you know, with the payroll and the the quarterly reports that I've done, um, there's just a couple of other things, there's, I've reached out to uh, James Towne, business manager, to see if she could come, I have not heard back from her, I, um, I did reach out to the auditor and he was going to have that in time, so he will get back to me, back to that. You know, um, things are just, it's just now with human resources and the payroll done. Um, I, I feel like I'm catching up on some things, so that is the, that is high on my list to get.
All right, so we have nothing to see or act on, but hopefully in the next meeting or two, now that Shannon will have two or three months, once she gets the first one done and, and gets it repeated, um, she'll be working through her progression. New business, uh, we have school policy in your packet, we've got first readings of one, two, three, four, five policies. Now, I, I Superintendent Stell has commentary on those up in her in the agenda that, yeah, I'm wondering if next month we could just move that part down in the packet to the area where we have.
Sure, yeah.
Following. Okay, so I'm on page three of the packet where she has background information on the first reasons of DEBC. DEB, E, DDA, DDAE, F, F. And she's recommending, um, you see there in green, um, so DEBC is a new policy to us. The others are all policies we already have and need to amend. So because DEBC gives to district personnel is new, um, we would, we would be seeking a motion to adopt the policy. And that's the one that we wanted to have a rapid conversation on.
Go ahead, kind of later. Okay, so you can see that this is gifts to district personnel and, um, if you read it, it, that our employees cannot accept gifts, benefits or other thing of value. And here's what my concern would be with that, and you guys like can go against me, but if we have a vendor that comes in and works with the coaches, they oftentimes will offer, um, a sweatshirt or a polo shirt or, you know, some, something for our coaches and, and we end up not having to buy some of that stuff. Um, a gift from them and it's generally something of very, I wouldn't say big value, right? They're not taking them out on a trip to Fargo to stay over, but they're offering something to the coaches as incentive. And if we implement this or we adopt this policy, there, it could be, um, up for debate whether that is allowable or not, you know, it's the thing of value, so like we have this conversation, what is value? You know, is that a new car, is that a trip to Fargo, or is that a shirt, you know? And I wouldn't want to put our coaches in jeopardy of not following a policy that we have in place and our practice not following our policy, so. That would be the only thing that I would be. My thoughts were.
And this is a recommended policy, it's not required, we do not have to adopt it and may not be necessary. This would be a first reading, but if we don't choose to act on it, we I wouldn't have the policy, and it's very, very short, you can see it's one sentence, district employees shall not accept any gifts, benefits or other thing of value from an individual or company relating to the individuals or companies attempt to sell or lease or to sell lease or to sell lease of equipment or materials to the district.
Again, it would be open to interpretation, right? You might say, well, you know, that isn't equipment or that's not materials, but.
If you, if you want, we can act on a first reading or we can leave it aside. We can adopt it, you know, we can, we can follow up and do it anytime in the future that we want, but if we're not comfortable with it right now, then you don't have to do anything.
How often do you feel that this is an issue?
It's okay, like you guys, your coaches, how often? Like you guys, your coaches, how often you think this?
I mean, if it's something of concern, do you place a dollar amount and say not over a certain dollar?
I, I don't think that we get, you know, a, a vendor coming and saying, um. Look, we're going to give you this free equipment for personal use. You know, there might be something that is for school use and this is more the personal use side of it, I believe. But I'm, I'm not concerned about our staff. This being, you know, something that would be a problem, that it would be offered, something that would. For personal usage.
I think my thoughts would be is if it's not mandatory, I, I wouldn't have it. If I turn down something, but our employees are just. When people are trying to sell me stuff, I always say.
If there's no, uh, great desire to adopt that policy, let's leave it aside, knowing that if, if we feel the need, we can approve it at any time. So that leaves us with DEBE, which is similar or related, I guess, in playing relations with vendors. That is recommended. We already have the policy. We adopted it way back in twenty ten. And it has minor content changes. The marked up version is in your packets. Uh, the other two that, uh, we're asking for amendments are FFD possessing weapons. And then DDA sick leave and DDAE, which is related to this, which is obviously. Um. The only one that's required is at possessing weapons.
Right.
That one we amended in November twenty-one, but there's updates related to federal law requirements. DDA and DDAE are really, those are our, those were ones that we wanted to. Make some changes to based on issues that were identified last year, the classified stuff of sick days.
Well, our practice is not matching our policy. So either we change our practice. Or we change our policy and I really, I feel like changing our policy needs to be done because in this world of trying to get people to come and work for us. The more benefits that we can offer somebody, the better, the more appealing that we can make our, our, we work at our school and, um. It's just to me is unfair to app, offer our nine month, our pairs with no sick leave, right? Or no chance of sick leave base. And that's what this wording would change to, to allow them to be in the same. Which we, they've already been, right? But in the future to allow it. So our, our practice wasn't aligning with our policy.
So those policies, the marked up versions were in your packet, uh, and. Superintendent Sell recommends, um, approval of those, uh, changes that were highlighted and the, the appropriate. Motion for that would be I move to amend policies DEBE, DDA, DDAE. And FFE, FFD owner on first reading as written and that they be presented for adoption at the next regular board meeting. Is there a motion? To that effect? Nagel moves that. Is there a second? Heiberg seconds. Now, is there any discussion or questions related to the actual, um. Language in the policies or just just a change? Changes to be, that we're considering. Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Any discussion or questions on those recommended policy changes? So FFE, those are. Those are, um, those updates were told were made to reflect federal law requirements and that is a required policy. Any other questions? Any questions or comments? If not, we're voting to. Move the, uh, first reading of these four policies to be considered at the next regular board meeting. All those, oh, do we, we do, we'll call them. We'll call, yes. Sheila Nagel?
Yes.
Robert Thorp?
Yes.
Monica Heiberg. Ron DeDee?
Yes.
Tony Miel?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Right, the next item on policy review, as you know, next month, November is the month that we have to complete our first evaluation of superintendent self. As I was getting prepared for this. Um, I discovered that we are not using the latest, um, revision of the school board association. Recommended, uh, superintendent job description or evaluation template. Um, and I'm a little confused because I was told recently that they are working on updating that again. And there's been some, uh, there was someone, uh, one of the legal staff, was it the policy person at the state? School Boards Association has resigned and they're seeking. Well, I had been reaching out to the School Boards Association with questions about this and nobody was getting back to me and I'm wondering if. If they're sure it's back. And so as you can see in, uh, the, the documents that superintendent sell. And then they, they came out a little garbled in my packet. And then I shared them with you again. Looking at the updated superintendent's, um. Evaluation and job description. I thought that it's much more concise. It has only six domains instead of ten. And then the questions and the bullet points within them, I thought were much more specific and easily measured. Um. I'm not sure. I, I don't know if we need to do this at this time. Um. But it looked like less work for me. Um, so I, to be when the, the evaluation's done place. Some of them, I think, for example, there was one I just thought that, that. That's something about, um, the superintendent recommending for discharge or non-renewal in a timely manner and. Like, well, it's pretty hard to evaluate that. I mean, there might be some that we should leave out for the moment. I'm just looking for guidance. What do you want to do next month for superintendent's self? Evaluation, given that it's the first. Should we just stick with what we did previously and then? Work towards re, adopting the new method for the.
Well, I mean, not, not the same as the old, but whatever one we do, I think we should do.
Okay. Do we have time? What, what did you think of the new model? And then if they're going to change it again, I. But I, I followed up at least once with my initial email and I never got any. Shall we stick with what we've done the last couple of years or been three or four years? I think we're been using. We have the job description that we've been using. Yeah. And we, um, we added Anna's stated goals. Sort of within where we thought they would fit. Why don't we just stick with that? Um, I'll get that template out to you this week. And then, uh, we can be considering this for adoption in the spring for, for use for the next week. Or by then, maybe we'll see what they come out with.
So if you want us to bring back C A A D for the changes later on?
I think, well, I think we should work towards that for the next four years.
Okay.
It might, might be. We'll use what we've, we've been using and I'll get. Okay, so no action to be taken. That brings us to, uh, items for future agenda. These are things that you know we've talked about. Uh, they're underway, but may need action in a community.
And I was thinking if anybody on the board wanted to add something to that, it's just even more for me to just. Rather move forward and remember these are things for now. To keep in mind.
Any thoughts about, um, the. The revised, uh, agenda format? We don't want to limit discussion, but we want, I'd like to have more time for presentations like we had in the. And not, not just all feel good stuff. If we've got stuff that's harder than, and, uh, and struggle, then we want to know about that. All right. Anything else? If not, remember next month's meeting, uh, is scheduled for Tuesday the fifteenth. That's one week later. To allow me to work at the November eighth general election. Seven AM. We won't have to have any special meetings before that. And then the Tuesday, December thirteenth meeting. Yeah, I saw that, but it's right on in the past. Okay. Okay. Any other? We did, we, and we approved them. They were in the consent agenda. I know, but it's right there in the consent. It's right there. Thank you for bringing it up though.
I changed up the bill format, um, this time. Cause I found out that instead of just putting, you know, the credit card on there to commercial. Card or something, that was the very last one in the, in the back. And that was the one report that I. Find that I liked on the credit cards. So, and I wrote on the top, this was all the credit card charges. And then the rest of these are actual bills. Okay. Um, and. Uh, this was the first one I could find that I liked. It didn't have so much junk. It wasn't twenty-three pages for the credit card. So I thought this one will work. So I can tweak that a little bit or see if there's anything better out there. Um, but at least this way you see who it's written to instead of, you know, it used to just say commercial. Yes, now you can see who we're actually charging to and it works better with the bookkeeping because. Otherwise it would go to customer or custodian's files. It would just go to credit card. The only option I had would be like these numbers over here. Those are the line numbers of the credit card statement. So I can go like the very first one, Adobe, it's line eighty-seven. On charges. So that's, that was kind of how Tom had done it, how April had done it and everybody just kept doing it and it works out pretty slick. So that's why this one is a little bit different than the rest of them.
I thought your, um. Your description, your memo lines descriptions are descriptive and makes it easier to see. All right. Any other questions or comments or anything for the good of the order? No. If not, I'll declare this meeting adjourned at eight oh four AM. Thank you.